For like any comments to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Rosio, Roche Hall.
Commissioner Glass.
Here.
Vice Chairman Hewart.
Here.
Chairman Say.
Here.
Commissioner Putnam.
Here.
Commissioner Patterson.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
And arriving is Commissioner Hall. And absent today, we have Commissioner Kennedy.
Okay. Amanda, do we have any announcements?
We have one announcement. It appears that we will not be able to hear 155 Olive this evening. The wind has played its dirty tricks and the notice is no longer on the front of the property that's required. It was there about a week or so ago because Rosio goes by to make sure those are up, but it's not up today. And so, the city attorney has weighed in and said that we, what we'll do when we get to that item is we'll open it and continue it till November and then the applicant can let us know if November doesn't work for their schedule, we can carry it over to December.
Okay.
And let me get, Mr. Campbell is joining us by phone, so let me get him on the phone. He and quite a few other people are at the League of California Cities Conference this week. Okay, Scott, we're gonna put you on speakerphone. Hold on. Are you there?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
So, Scott, we open and close it with no discussion?
For 155 Olive.
Yes, you would open it and then you'd continue it to the next date, the next planning commission meeting.
Okay.
You wanna do the minutes first?
Anybody would like to make a motion to approve last month's minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Abstaining for the actions are Commissioners Patterson and Commissioner Putnam. Everybody else? Let's go ahead and vote.
If you watched it, it doesn't count?
If you watched it, that's fine.
I was absent, but I watched it.
Call for vote. Commissioner Hall.
Ah, yes.
Commissioner Glass.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Say.
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips.
Yes.
Okay, Amanda.
Okay, the next item is a public hearing for a conditional use permit at 155 Olive. Due to unexpected deficiency in the public notice, we're going to open this item and continue it until the November 20th meeting with the possibility of it being moved till the December 18th meeting.
Okay. I'm gonna open up to the public.
Open it to the public about that?
Yeah.
Right, but we're actually-
We're gonna continue it.
Continue?
Yes.
So, we won't be taking action on it this evening. We'll actually be discussing it and considering it in November or December.
Okay.
Yes, certainly. Come up to the podium so it goes on the record.
My name is Ellen Horn. I live at 112 Olive. I'm not sure I understand what's happening with this because there was same building, the upper floor. Wasn't this already decided? Because nothing's changed. We still have a hotel that takes up half of the street. We have, already have a lot of strangers running around on our street, parking rented golf carts. What's changed? It's the same building, the same footprint.
Uh huh. They're allowed to reapply and so that's what they're doing.
How often?
The city allows you to reapply after six months.
Okay.
And the last time we heard it was in September 2018. And it was for both of the units in 2018 and then this is just for the downstairs unit.
Okay. Okay.
So, we'll continue this till the November agenda because we have to stay a date, but the applicant can request for it to be moved on till December.
So, it's for November or December?
Right now, we are continuing it to November.
Okay.
Because we have to call out, we have to actually-
December, there's a conflict of interest in my state. I'll let you know, Amanda, as soon as I can.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. The notice that is no longer on the building, who's responsible for placing that notice?
The applicant.
The applicant, okay.
So, for next month or December, go in your property right now and place it inside with tape so it doesn't flow or-
We'll have to give them a new one.
Yeah, and we'll give you a new notice.
Okay.
All right?
Okay, thank you guys.
You're welcome. Oh, no, we're sorry.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Our next item is-
I'm gonna close this.
You're gonna close that one, thank you. And we're continuing it to November, okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Julie.
All right, so we got through that one and now Amanda.
Hang on, can we go back to that item?
Yes.
We need a mo-, sorry, my meeting was on. We need a motion to continue it to the November meeting.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to continue it in the November meeting.
Second?
I'll second that.
Micah seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Does that work, Scott?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next item is a conditional use permit application for transient rental at 62 Camino de Flores at Hamilton Cove condominiums. The owner is Lamont Reeves. The applicant is the same. This is in the high-density residential zone. This application is within the 300-foot appealable zone for its coastal development permit. We, the property manager is gonna be Veronica Bravo. Her number is listed. It is a one-bedroom, one-bath unit, so the occupancy would be two per bedroom plus two since we are out of the freshwater allocation timeframe or freshwater restriction timeframe. We are recommending that you find this project categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the State Sequel Guidelines, that you adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit for the operation of a transient rental at 62 Camino de Flores, subject to the attached conditions of approval, and that you adopt the necessary findings to support approval of the coastal development permit, including that the project is within the 300-foot appealable zone, and that you include in the conditions of approval that upon sale of the property, the new owner shall be required to register their ownership with the planning department. And are you Veronica?
I'm Veronica.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna open up the public hearing.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Did Commissioner Glass recuse himself from this?
Yes, he recused himself. He's in the back.
Yes, he did.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Veronica.
Hello, how are you?
Does anybody have any questions? No?
I do. Does it include a golf cart, Veronica?
Yes, it does have, it's golf cart, own golf cart.
Okay, thank you.
And there's always been a golf cart with that unit since-
Correct, yes.
And it has its own private parking?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Would anybody else care to speak in the public? Okay. I think we're good.
You good?
Yeah. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Open it up for discussion. Anyone have any questions on, with commission regarding this thing? No? Would anyone care to make a motion?
Move to approve with all the standard conditions as recommended by staff.
Second.
Call for vote.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hewart?
Yes.
Chairman Say?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Amanda.
Our next two items, we gave you the update on where we are with the conditional use permits, with our enforcement action on them. You had asked for the status of all the grandfathered properties and I believe that's in the staff report as well. We are planning on bringing back the conditional use permit all as one item and so at our next meeting, let me back up. My understanding from the commission is that the commission is not, does not want to tackle the saturation issue until all of the enforcement actions are completed. Is that true?
I think that's what was requested.
Okay, so-
I mean, I don't think we'll ever have it completely. I mean, I'm just wondering, to me, it doesn't, it, I understand the reasoning and we should, like, I really want that to happen, but from what I see is it can only be, it can only be worse than what we had knew before. I mean, this, we have so much more information than we had three months ago and now we're having, you know, we're trying to hone in on so much of it. I don't see what, you know, tackling those issues, I mean, I would just say what's, what would be the difference between knowing every single one and what, and just formulate, starting to formulate our policy towards offering it to City Council for consideration?
I think the question was, did we want to go forward with the new licensing process and not have resolved how we want to determine saturation? The city attorney has said it's better to do everything together and not try to do it piecemeal. So, we're looking for direction from you. If you're comfortable going forward with the current revisions in the code that address the change in the licensing procedure where it becomes a license and not a land use entitlement without changing the saturation criteria.
So, the saturation could be done at a different time?
That could come back at a later date.
Because it seems-
So, we would stay with what we have for now.
So, the que, the reasoning behind waiting until we have a better grip on what's out there is to say we can't really make a judgment about-
Okay, oh, thank you, Eric.
About, we can't really make a judgment about what the percentages are per street as it stands? Is that, is that what the reasoning is?
Well, I think my reasoning was, was I know a lot of people have them and don't use them. And I know that we do have that system where you can bank them and who's using them year round as, like, me being an owner and a property and I've had this CUP, that I'm living here and I'm not going anywhere. You know what I mean? So, we can get a grasp on what, who is really utilizing their permit the way it was intended to use and who is, who is actually just keeping it because it is, that's the issue everybody's having, it's worth value, right? So, and, and, and I wanna know this too because I've had a few people speak against CUPs and don't want anymore, but hold them. So, it's very interesting. And so, that's why it's like, okay, that's not fair either, right? You're advocating that it's a problem, but yet you hold them.
So, and so, it'd be, I wanna know who is going to, who is like, using them the way
they were intended and who, so that means they're not, people are living there year round and living and gonna grow older there and not use it and that just, they just want it to transfer with the land because that, that's, that's a different kind of impact. So-
So, what you're, what the council is considering, because I just wanna turn up on, is going forward on taking it out of being a land use entitlement and making it be administrative permit, we'll go ahead on that and then start talking about, we have as well as we can possibly hone in on, on how things are working and what we have, then we can start considering how to formulate perhaps a new bent on saturation? Is that, am I saying this correctly? Okay?
Yes, yes, the issue is, when we do the licensing matter, we're going to substantially revise the ordinance and take some of it out of the planning portion and place it into the business licensing section. And so, we can do that now because we have directions. The council had indicated that and, and that is your, your direction as well. That involves substantial rewrite of the municipal code in order to do that. At the same time, once saturation is gone through, if we decide to make changes in how we're gonna determine whether someone gets a license or not, that may or may not involve a substantial revision in the municipal code as well. And so, the question is, do you wanna do it all at once or do you wanna do it in, in two phases? And obviously, it's easier and cheaper for staff and fees to do it all at once, but we can do it separately, it's just depending on what your direction is.
When will this all take an effect after it goes, you have to send it to them twice?
Yes, it would take two readings at the City Council level to amend the ordinance. And it typically goes into effect 30 days after, right, Scott?
Yes, so if we didn't, the ordinance, you know, and we're, we're going to be through with the voluntary stuff probably, hopefully, next month or so because we gave them a deadline. And so, we'd have an idea then and then we could start the process and we could have, you know, we have to go to the planning commission first for direction and then if that's approved, then it goes to the City Council for two consecutive meetings. So, you have time to get this done before the March election, if you wanted to do that now or wait. It's, again, it's up-
I have just one problem with it, which is that every month now, two CUPs are permitted. And it's just like clockwork and it's just adding to the situation that we're trying to prevent and it seems like the, just collecting more data is what we've been doing for years and it's just sort of stalling. Well, I see the wisdom in it. My worry, my worry has been on this is that, and you guys have expressed that, the coun, the commission has expressed that when we first started talking about this, is that you were, you have done this many times. You have gone through this arduous consideration of all of this and then the recommendation, which is, I guess, the risk we take, but to, they asked us to consider it and most important part was the land use entitlement issue and that if we give it to the City Council now and it goes nowhere, which worries me because of, we have four people and I, I'm a little bit, but I'd still like to move ahead. I mean, I, and then make, can, what about if the, if we put it to the council and they rejected our idea about making it not be a land use entitlement? Could it be re-presented to a council if the council makeup changed? Come to attention?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, one thing, one option is to, is to have an agenda item at a future council meeting where you say, you've asked us to do this, this, this analysis, we've decided that we wanna go to the license. Do you want us to undertake that now or wait till after saturation or perhaps do you not want us to continue, continue that?
So, here's the thing. So, we give them a recommendation as this coun, this council asked us to do. They deny it for whatever reason. Then it comes back to us and then we get a new council and-
How many times do you gotta beat the same Marshall?
Well, I think-
But you know what? This isn't really the council that told us to do that at all.
But-
It's not, it's completely different.
Mayor Marshall was one of them.
Yeah, she was.
She was, so.
That's one person.
And Cindy, Ms. Cassidy was also one of them. So, I mean, I don't think it's, it's right to say, well, we're not gonna give it to them until we know that the way we want it to go is to go. That's not what we're here to do, is to benefit our, what we feel. It, we have to, it has to be fair.
So, I think the question from Scott is, are we comfortable enough where we are with describing the license process to take that back to the City Council, see if this is still the direction they want us to go? If it is, then we get it clean and pretty, we bring it back to the planning commission, planning commission recommends adoption, it goes back for two readings to the City Council. Is that what, that's what you said, right, Scott?
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, no.
And we give a second shot.
Yes, so we could, we could do that, if that's in November, we could, you know, I can guarantee it will be on the planning commission agenda in December. We can, we can kinda, we, we could rush it, get it on the agenda in November, but I can guarantee it will be in December and then you have the hearing, depending on how many meetings we have in January, it would be done the latest, first meeting in February.
So, potentially at the second meeting in November for the City Council, we would give them an update as to where we are. They would confirm that we're in the right place and then November, it comes back to the planning commission and then, excuse me, December, it comes back to the planning commission, January, it goes for two readings. Is that the timeframe that you envisioned, Scott?
Yeah, I'm assuming we're having two meetings in January. And we could also put it, I don't know if there's room on the agenda for the meeting on November 5th. Looks like, looks like the meetings in January would be January 7th and January 21st so we wouldn't have a problem with New Year's.
Right, right. Okay. That's what I, well, right, second meeting in November for councils to give them an update where we are and then come back to planning commission at our December planning commission meeting and then hopefully two readings in January. Okay, Denise is nodding that that, she thinks that might work. Okay, so that's, is that workable with the commission?
Do we have to make a motion?
Do we need a motion from us, Scott?
I think that would be best to say, I think it'd be best to have a motion directing the planning director to bring the concept in conjunction with working with the city attorney to the council for final direction.
Okay.
So, moved? Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, okay. Did you write that down, Scott, what you said?
Perfectly.
Okay, all right. And then our last item, quick update on the accessory dwelling units. We were going to have you discuss expanding our accessory dwelling unit ordinance to apply to multifamily dwellings. I gave you a copy of the presentation that Elizabeth Hall did last night at the City Council meeting. The governor has made further changes to the accessory dwelling unit laws, density bonus laws, and so, we're, need to bring back our accessory dwelling unit ordinance anyway. They, a couple of the changes that are interesting is the, they are, have said that HOAs cannot prohibit accessory dwelling units in condominium complexes.
Wow.
That, and they've expanded the areas where people can do accessory dwelling units and so, we're gonna come back later on with another update to our accessory dwelling unit. So, we're not going to push forward this evening. I think we had a positive consensus from the commission to allow accessory dwelling units in multifamily dwellings, but since we have to come back anyway to address the new changes that the governor's made, we're gonna bring accessory dwelling units back. Do you think we could have time to pull that together for November, Scott?
It, I, I think we can.
Or December, because we're, November and December are pretty much our study session months.
Yeah, it, it'll definitely be December. I can see about November, we would have to, you know, there's certain noticing requirements when, when we consider an ordinance.
Right.
But I'll, I'll, I'll see, I'll see if I can get it in November. My only hesitation in November, just being transparent here, is Elizabeth Hall who's doing this takes a two-week vacation in Bogota, Columbia. So, I'd rather have her take her time and get it right December.
Well, then maybe we'll just go ahead and say we'll plan on December. Kinda give Elizabeth time to get back from vacation. And I think that's it there. One of the other things that I, you had, I think you had a lot of presence in front of your nameplate this evening.
Yes.
I did pass out an email about the 34th Annual Land Use Law and Planning Conference. It's in January, it's always downtown at the, I believe at the Biltmore. It's kind of an all-day thing. If there is money for training and travel, so if any of you wanted to attend, let me know and we can help make that happen. Or if there are other conferences that you think you would like to-
I was just gonna ask about the, because I was trying to make sure I was understanding what you discussed at last meeting and between the multifamily dwelling unit and the single-family dwelling unit and this was exactly, it's in the presentation last night, I did not watch the meeting last night, but that's what I was thinking. I saw it was on the agenda to have, go into phase two of the Whitney Switley Project and I was thinking, oh, that's, that's why we need to move on this, is for just this kind of, it could be-
This change to the code is not the reason that we're able to put the number of units?
It would help.
True, if the city-
I think it would help the whole city.
If the city-
Oh, no, absolutely.
Because we don't have any, everybody's landlocked. We don't have any land.
No, 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 I know, and so-
So, it would be so nice if people can, if willing to go up to create housing, I mean.
No, I, I was, but I was thinking, if we have to do this to make that move forward, then, yeah, it's a great thing.
This change, when adopted, would it actually allow the city to have more than another five units? They would be able to add maybe six or seven. But the great thing about accessory dwelling units, if those of you that recall, in the past, when people would add an extra unit, it would be a density bonus unit. And density bonus comes with a, under the current law, comes with an affordability covenant, it can't be sold separately and ADUs are, are opening a whole new horizon. Accessory dwelling units do not come with an affordability covenant, but one of the things that the Avalon imposed that we had the right to do was we would not allow them to be transient rental. So, but it can be a market rate unit. It doesn't have an affordability covenant and that was one of the things I think that held some people back. You pay, you know, a good amount of money for, to create a new unit and then you'd be restricted on the, who could rent it. So, it, I think it's a lot of good things. I think there's a lot of good things for Avalon. It kinda opened some doors where we might be able to get some additional units, one here, one there, but everything's good.
I was gonna ask on this, on this that was in our packet, I ju, I just thought it was interesting, but I figured maybe this is HUD, HUD stuffs is number six, it's number item six and it's, for low and moderate income housing, they really are, they don't, I mean, the, the building should be located closer than, no, no building should be located closer than 10 feet from any street or project boundary line. That's much more stringent than if it's not, right? Isn't that different?
I don't know what you're looking at.
Well, I, it's in this packet that you gave us, the small multifamily dwellings.
Okay.
And I'm not really, like, I should've been able to tell you exactly what, what heading it's under and, and it isn't any kind of contention or, it's just a comment I was looking at, is that I was thinking maybe, so it's on the, go back one, two, three pages from- Pages from...
Well, they're numbered at the bottom, but it says 5 of 5, 6 of 6, 7 of 7.
All right, let me see what I can see here. And I used a highlighter to mark it up, and so, I can barely see the highlighter, so it's yellow, like I'm not, anyway, so...
They said something last night about 4 feet.
Yeah, it's on page 12 of 12. Well, actually, there's 13, but, anyway.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's right there, that 4A B, and how it says for low and moderate income housing, that's more stringent than it would be for just a regular accessory dwelling unit, is it not?
I think that is language that is currently...
I was just thinking, maybe it's HUD something, or, I don't know, because it's, but I just thought that was interesting. It's no, I'm not asking anything or saying anything, I just, I was kind of thinking, looking at it saying, the setbacks and stuff are a lot different for just, you know...
That may have come straight out of the state guidelines.
Yeah, I suspect. So, no, I think it's great.
I have a question. These are saleable units, when it's in place?
The new laws that they just signed in, that I think are called out in the handout I gave you, would allow them to be sold separately. Under the previous accessory dwelling unit statutes that were passed like last year, you couldn't sell it separately. They've changed that.
So, now you're basically subdividing a lot and put that...
You could, you could, for example, if you have a single-story home in the flats, you could add an accessory dwelling unit on the second floor, you could go through the condo process to divide that house into two condominiums, and you could be able to sell the second unit.
So, you still have to condoize?
Right, yes ma'am.
Kind of creative, but it's also put density where it wasn't before, you know?
Yeah, that would double the golf carts.
Well, we're trying to create housing.
So, anyway, so that, so the accessory dwelling units will be coming back as well.
Okay.
And there's no affordability possibility to choose, because it's state mandated?
The state's mandated, the state restricts what the additional restrictions are that cities can impose, and I think the best we were able to hope for is that it couldn't be transient. But it doesn't come with an affordability covenant, unless they're using city housing money.
I think it would probably just slow down the number that would be converted anyhow, if you said, I've gotta tell you what the rate is, you know, as opposed to, I'm gonna do this and I can create the rate.
Our shortage is in affordable housing. It's not really, I mean, there's a lot of million-dollar places still for sale.
But I, I think there's a lot of people out there that would pay, that are in the 1,500, $2,000 a month range, and it's, there's not a lot of housing out there.
They'd be happy to have it, yeah.
A brand-new unit.
I had one other thing, and this is not about the affordable housing, I mean, we're done, talking about the affordable housing.
The accessory dwelling units, yes sir.
Okay.
And we talked about planning, doing stuff. Right now, if you drive to Beverly Beach or Crescent Ave, from the beginning of town out to the casino, all those K-rails have six to eight feet of dirt behind them poking through the fences.
Okay.
It's October 15th, I would think, if we were gonna clear them before the rains start again, because I know they look at shutting these roads all the time, out to the casino to Descanso and to Hamilton Cove, there's only one route out there.
Okay.
Beverly Beach, you can go the back way, but out there, there's not. How do we go about saying to the city, at what point are we gonna start clearing that stuff out so it's ready? What do we, I mean...
I do have, do you know?
I know that it's on a Supreme laws list, and I will look into that hard.
Okay, I appreciate it, I just look at it as I got. Okay, okay, great.
Okay, any more Commissioner business?
Fall Fest tomorrow night?
Yeah, I had one.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I don't know, I assume you've got the, there's, the FCPC issued all-new rules that restrict the conflict of interest. Basically, it's still the same if it involves your property or your business, and that's seeking an application or entitlement, but they adopted all-new rules for things that you may or may not do that affect the business that you own, or, and so, they're before you, I'm sending a memo out next week. This is the third different, or set of rules in the last four years, and they've done this more objectively, it's basically whether this issue has specific dollar impact on your business, and so, I've given you all of those for your consideration, and again, look for a memo next week from Amanda that will attach my memo, that will have what the new rules are. I'm gonna try and explain it in English, the legislation's a little complex.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner business?
No.
No? Okay, then that concludes this meeting, so I'm going to close the meeting.
Reneged?
Adjourned.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Goodnight, Tony.